I need my book.
Is it my back?
It's your back.
Okay.
So I just said it.
Huh? You just made it my back?
My last. So I said it is.
Oh, sorry.
Good morning, Wednesday, October 28th, City Council meeting will call to order. We have in the audience former Councilman John Nix. Hello, sir. And former Councilman Don Warren as well. At this time, please join Rodrick in invocation. And then we'll do the pledge lightly.
May we bow? Our gracious Father, we come before you first of all thanking you for this day. And we thank you for these citizens that have gathered here today. We ask you to please bless our council and our employees and our staff of our city. And God, we ask you to please touch those that are going through the pandemic at this time. Although we know that you are a keeper and you are healer, we want to keep our mind stayed on you. And thank you for all that you've done in our lives and thank you for what you're doing and what you're going to do. And God, we ask you to please bless our mayor and our city council, and particularly our mayor. I know he's ready to be done with us. And we thank you for his service and the time that he spent with our city staff and all the knowledge that he's imparted into us. We ask you to please continue to bless him and his family. And we thank you for this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes from the September 9th meeting.
We have to approve minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by Sellers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We have some award presentations.
It's a video, sir?
Mr. City Manager, okay, go ahead and let's do it. That's great. I like the old pictures. That's pretty cool. So at this time, I guess we'll go ahead and start with zoning count. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Do we have cards? Cassandra?
You just have the developer for Z2 on the line.
I'm sorry?
You just have the developer for Z2 on the line.
Okay, do we have anyone for? Okay, good. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Got another card coming in.
Good morning, Cal.
This first request is a zone change or is a planned commercial district site plan amendment. This is in Council District number two. The applicant is requesting the site plan amendment to change the existing layout up from a car sales lot to a veterinary clinic. The adjacent properties to the north, east and south are zoned for commercial use and are currently undeveloped. To the east is developed with commercial property. The properties to the west are also commercial development but are currently undeveloped. The request is consistent with the adopted future land use designation of mixed use center. The applicant is proposing a 20,000 square foot vet clinic. The proposed building will have a maximum height of 35 feet and will include 84 parking spaces. And they have submitted a site plan that is for consideration. Of the notices that were sent, number returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
So this is a veterinarian clinic, is what you said?
Yes, sir. Vet clinic, it was previously a car sales.
Yes, right.
Right.
Yeah.
That's your sound.
Yeah, it is. Move to approve Z1?
Yeah, great. A motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Westbrook or McKeller? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, Z2?
This is a zone change from R1A, single family, to RMF, multifamily residential district. The applicant is requesting the zone change to allow for an apartment complex consisting of up to 75 units. This is in Council District number two as well. The properties to the north and east are zone R1A and are currently undeveloped. The properties to the south are R1A and M1 light industrial and are also undeveloped. And the properties to the northwest are single family and manufactured home, single family, and are developing single family homes. This request would amend the future land use guide from single family medium low density to multifamily. The property is currently located in the Tyler First North End planning area. And development of the property will help achieve the goal of adding 3,000 more households to the North End. As I mentioned, the applicant plans to build up to 75 units on the property at density of 16 units per acre where 24 units per acre is permitted. The subject property is located along the future extension of Lake Placid Road, which runs to on the north side of the property. It is also adjacent to Old New Day Road on the south. And so there is two collector streets that will provide good access to the property. Of the 14 notices that were sent, zero were returned in favor. And one was returned in opposition with a total protest of 15.09%. The opposition was concerned about the current condition of Old New Day Road and associated with the development of the property. As the unified development code requires that the developer will be required to upgrade their half of Old New Day Road as well as any other perimeter street. So that is something that the developer will be responsible to do. The plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommended approval of the request.
Any questions of Cal?
Can you, did I miss this? Can you tell me the intersecting street to Old New Day? It's right in front of the property?
That is Market Drive.
Market.
Yeah, Market goes down to, I think, Republic and to the Loop.
Move to approve Z2?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from McGee and a second from Sellers. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Z3?
This is a zone change request from Agricultural District to C2, General Commercial District. This is also in Council District number two. The applicant is requesting the zone change to allow for the development of commercial uses on the property. The properties to the east and north are currently undeveloped and are zoned for agricultural use. To the west is currently commercial use. And then to the south is currently zoned for agricultural use, but there's also a multifamily development or multifamily apartment complex there. The request would amend the future land use guide from single family to general commercial. Along, this is along West Grande Boulevard and there is existing commercial uses out there. So this would be consistent with the current trend for the area. This property is located at the intersection of a collector's street and a major arterial road or street. And the adjacent properties to the west are also zoned similarly, C2. Of the six notices sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. The plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Cal?
None for me.
Hearing done. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve Z3?
Motion. Motion by McGee, second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Z4?
This is a request from R2, two-family residential district to R1D, single family and single family attached residential district. This is in Council District number three. The applicant is requesting the zone change to allow for the development of a single family home, a detached, single family home. The properties to the northwest and south are zone R2, two-family, and are generally developed with single family homes and elementary school. The properties to the east are zone R1B, single family residential and is developed with a single family home. The property is currently too small for the current zoning and so the applicant needs the zone change to be able to develop the property. The request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the property as single family and single family attached, medium high density. Though the request is to R1D, it will not allow for the subdivision of the property to build like a townhome or duplex. It will be limited to a single family detached home, which would be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. This request, approval of the request will allow for the development of the property and will allow for the additional single family home to the North End area, which is consistent with the Tyler First comprehensive plan. Of the notices sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Questions of Cal?
Yeah, what's across street?
Franklin Street?
Franklin.
Yeah.
I can't see that.
Palace. Yeah. It's Austin Elementary across the road.
Some of them.
Create a motion by McKeller, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Z5?
This is a request for a planned multifamily district site plan amendment. The purpose of the request is to revise the layout of the property and to increase the number of residential units. The adjacent properties to the north are R1A and is developed with a single family home. To the east and south are RPO, Restricted Professional Office District, and are developed with office uses. And to the west is currently C1, light commercial and is developed with a sleep disorders center for UT health. The request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the property as mixed use center. This is in Council District number five. The applicant is proposing three, four unit attached townhomes on a single lot. In 2018, nine individual units were approved at a density of 8.3 units per acre. The site plan will increase the density to 9.5 units per acre. The all other, other criteria, including the setbacks and the maximum height, are still consistent with the prior approval. This is really just to allow for a few more units on the property. Of the notices that were sent, zero were returned in favor and one in opposition with a protest calculation of 1.64%. The neighbor that opposed the request, they were just concerned if their property was being rezoned or not or how that was going to impact their property. This request would not impact their property. The plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommended approval of the request.
Would you do me one favor for the next council, since I won't be at another zoning meeting ever again? The, you have this listed as major arterial existing. You don't have the names of the streets on that. And you've had two questions from council members, not on your, right there. You don't, you're not showing some street names. And I think somehow you incorporate some street names. But two council members have said something today, plus the public. I'd like for them to be able to see the street names as well.
Yeah.
I agree with him on that. And on some of the maps we get, there's words that they're not street names. I'm not even sure what they mean.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's, if you do that in the future, I'd appreciate it.
And the district, it's in.
And the district, it's in. But I mean, you've been mentioning that, so that's good. But, you know, I mean, you know, minor arterial existing, I got it, collector existing, I got all that. But I mean, that's kind of inside baseball and not.
Right.
Street names, so. Anyway, that's just my comment. This is in your district. You might have a comment about this, sure.
No, I can, I agree with everything that's been said so far. So thank you, Cal, for doing that. Future council meetings. I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor. And I'd make a motion to approve Z5.
Second.
Motion from Westbrook, a second by Sellers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Z5 passes. Z6?
This is a zone change request from RPO and Restricted Professional Office District and C1, light commercial district to PCD, Planned Commercial District. This is to allow for the, for the existing medical clinic to have more than three doctors on the property or more than three physicians. The, this is in Council District number one. The properties to the north, or the property to the north is multifamily, is developed with apartment complex. Properties to the east are developed with office uses. To the west is single family residential and is currently under development as, as single family homes. And to the south is currently undeveloped and is zoned for office use. This request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the property as a neighborhood commercial. The current RPO designation restricts the clinic to three or fewer physicians. The request here is to allow, given the size of the building, allow for more than three doctors on the property at a time. There's no other changes proposed to the property. So there's no more parking being added or expansion of the building or anything like that. It's simply to allow additional doctors to work within the building. Parking is determined by the size of the building, not the number of physicians on the property. So this shouldn't increase any need for parking. If there is a need for parking, it could be perhaps accommodated somewhere else with the adjacent property owner. And so this, approval of this request would not allow for, is not to expand the building or expand the parking. It's really to increase the number of doctors on the, on the property. Of the notices that were sent, one was returned in favor of the request. Two were returned in opposition with a protest calculation of 17%. The neighbors were concerned with changes to the property. That we did explain that, essentially what I explained here is that it's really what's going on inside the building, not any changes to the exterior. But they do want to maintain their, their concern with the change. The plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommended approval of the request.
We have two cards. Are there any questions of Cal on this one?
No, I, Cal and I had some discussions earlier in the week. And in the beginning, I thought there was an issue to the building itself. There's not. I think he's worked well with the neighbors around there. We've had this issue before. And so I don't have any questions, Cal.
Okay. Thank you. Is that a motion as well?
Are you going to let them comment?
I can if they would like, but it looks, just questions only?
Then I move to approve.
Okay, got you. Motion by Sellers, a second by Westbrook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Z7?
This is a zone change request from C1, light commercial district to PCD, Planned Commercial District. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing building on the property. This is Donnybrook's Automotive, or Donnybrook Automotive at the corner of Old Troop and Donnybrook. The properties to the north are developed with office uses. To the east, there are also light commercial uses. To the south is currently developed with single family homes. And then to the west is Rose Hill Cemetery. The future land use guide would be amended from single family to neighborhood commercial. The existing use on the property is currently non-conforming for the existing zoning. So the zone change would have been needed anyways to expand the use. But, and the planned commercial district allows for uses to be limited to just what they're doing instead of opening it up to other C2 uses. And so the applicant has supplied the site plan for consideration, which allows, which is requesting to add additional building to the bays for vehicles to the south of the property as well as it would provide a buffer yard adjacent to the residential district. So there would be screening and buffering from the two uses. Of the 11 notices that were sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. The plan that is only commissioned by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
So are they actually increasing the size of the lot? They're not, aren't they?
No, they're, they're not increasing the lot, but they are expanding the building to the south.
Okay. It's been there a long time.
Right.
Move to approve Z7.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Z8?
This is a request for a thorough fair closure of an unapproved portion of New Copeland Road. This is the prior alignment there where New Copeland goes into Biloxi. The applicant is requesting to close or abandon the right of way and replat the property into their adjacent, into their property. There are existing easements within the right of way. There's utility lines that will need to be dedicated as private easements at the time of the plat. The plan that is only commissioned recommended approval of the closure of the right of way subject to the property being replatted within six months.
Okay, are there any, any questions?
No. Move to approve Z8.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Cal.
Thank you, Cal.
R1?
Morning. Lisa Crossman, City Engineer. R1 is a request to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city to apply for grant funding under the Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure Fund Program. Half Associates is currently finalizing this multi-year comprehensive citywide stormwater master plan that they've been working on for the past several years. They're currently identifying future drainage projects for the city's capital program. As part of that identification of projects, they've identified two specific projects that they thought would be eligible for funding under this Water Development Board program. Now, this program actually has a two-phase application process. The first application is a very preliminary application, which is submitted. The Development Board staff reviews all the applications that they receive under that preliminary process and rank each application within the limits of the funding they have available for that year. And once they identify those projects that fit within the funding available, they notify those cities that they can then proceed with a full application. So the city did go through that preliminary process and has been notified that we are eligible for funding for these two specific projects. So now we have to do this resolution authorizing the full application, naming me as the representative making the application and naming Half Associates as the firm that's assisting the city on this process. So the two specific projects that we would be applying for funding are, the first is Black Fort Creek at Gentry Parkway. So this would, both of these projects are, would be preliminary engineering only. So they would both involve just a full hydrologic and hydraulic study of the flooding conditions within these study areas. So this project would identify the flooding issues that are occurring along Gentry at the bridge specifically that crosses Black Fort Creek. The funding available from the Water Development Board would be equal to $28,000 or 35% of the estimated $80,000 total cost of this study. The next project is at Willow Creek, the headwaters of Willow Creek, which is a much larger study area, which is basically bounded by Oakwood, Palace and Rose Garden area. And again, the Water Development Board funding would be in the amount of $62,400 or 39% of the total $160,000 cost of the study.
That's great. And these are areas that we need to study and we're going to study with half anyway.
That's correct.
So yeah, that's, that's a great way to help mitigate the cost to us, I think.
Absolutely.
All right. Good job.
All right. Thank you.
We have a motion from McKeller, second by Sellers, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Good idea. Hope you feel better. Send it horse. R2?
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Fire Chief David Kobel. I'm here with a bit of good news. We have been working on this project for. We were before you in February of 2020 requesting to put in for a grant for our EOD Explosive Ordnance Device Team, AKA bomb team as well. So the good news is that we did get that grant. And so the request is that City Council consider authorizing the city manager to accept grant 3984201 in the amount of $82,000 to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and/or enhancing the city of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities and consider authorizing purchase of two bomb suits and the accompanying equipment in the amount of $81,161 for the bomb team that is currently being formed. About 10 days ago, the FBI came in and they approved what we had already done at this point. I'll go back some. We started this in March of 2018, planning to put an EOD team here in the city of Tyler and for the region. The FBI approved that and then they gave us a list of equipment that we needed in order to get the team going. We have been very fortunate in that Brookshires have donated a trailer for us as well as some other equipment we got from the metroplex cities of Mesquite, Fort Worth. I believe Garland also loaned, some loaned us some equipment, some gave us some equipment. And so our three-member bomb team is right now in Redstone Arsenal in Huntsville, Alabama. They're in their second week of a six-week program. And when they come back, they'll be certified as bomb technicians. And we will actually be a legitimized bomb team as soon as they come back in November. So with that, it's recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to accept the grant, grant 3984201 in the amount of $82,000 and authorize the purchase of two bomb suits and equipment in the amount of $81,161. A picture that was up earlier is a picture of those suits. They're custom-made, so they don't start beginning one until we actually have the money to purchase it. So they're over $40,000 each. And they are to protect those technicians if an explosive actually were to go off.
Good. That's the only way I'd want them to do that work.
You're right.
I want to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
I want to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, to the chief for an amazing job that he was doing.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
He is pretty amazing, isn't he?
Yeah.
Happy to have you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so what's that?
So Chief, what hap, so if we were to have something like that now, so do you have to like call another agency in and we'd have to wait?
Yes, sir. Right now, we would get a team out of Garland. The closest to us is Garland to the west, and then to the east, it would be Shreveport. Both of those, including the teams that are in the metroplex area, they're, they get this brother and sisterhood once they become bomb techs. So they all will be training together. We'll be getting expertise from those people as they come along. Also, equipment, we'll be applying for different grants to keep them supplied with the equipment that they need, like the robot, which is over $100,000 just for the robot. We were loaned a robot because those people get UWASI money, federal money, because they're in more of a terroristic area. We are a UWASI city, but we're way down in the categories that we don't get that federal funding for UWASI. But they'll share equipment with us, and so we've been able to do it just for minimal budget money. The training that they're going through is about $21,000, and we were grateful that we were able to get that budgeted through the City Council.
Right. I assume that we'll be able to help our neighboring cities and our friends in East Texas.
Yes, sir. We will be a regional team, so we'll respond to the Oklahoma border and down south in the Nacogdoches area and to the, to the east. I think somewhere around Canton or a little bit east-west of that will be our stopping point. Garland will still pick it up, so we'll kind of come to a head going that direction. But east, it's all ours, and north is most of the hours in East Texas and in south as well.
I like that. Appreciate it. Since we have become such a hub for East Texas, it's great that we can also reach out and help our rural and our urban friends around us.
Yes, sir.
So good. Thank you for doing it.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by McKeller, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
M1.
Morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning, Russ.
This is a, probably the smallest amount I've ever asked for on addition to the park.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. You wanted to discuss it? Go ahead.
The, we request just as a change order in regards to Garrett and Associates expenses of $3,729.70 for the completion of Emmett Scott Park construction. And as you can see through some of the pictures on, that's the original overlay, which I don't have a new overlay to give you. But this is, I thought every park was something different. We'd keep doing something as we add on, but this one, I feel like we just, every park just keeps you better and better. And this is the jewel of Tyler right now is the Emmett Scott Park is the, have a quarter-mile track around the whole park. It's a city block square. Everything's been redone, the bathrooms remodeled, but we're still in good shape. But as you move on through the pictures of this one, as we completion, the, you can just keep moving through the slides as we go through those. The signage being different, the quality of the products that are out there, the concrete, everything when we first met with the community leaders in that area was the aspect of safety in regards to even playing basketball. There were ankle-brankle, ankle-branking situations if they went off the court real easy. And so just to bring this park up to a complete rendition and spend it nearly three-quarters of a million dollars and just refreshing the whole park. And Mayor, I'd like to add this, I know there's another session, but I think, and I can't confirm or deny because I didn't really look at it, but in the last 20 years, we've spent more money on parks under your leadership, and I appreciate that.
Well, that was...
In the last two years, I should say.
Right. Well, it's been the last, yes, it has been very good, but I will have to admit that it's not just me.
I know.
Obviously, right? It's all the members up here, and it's Don Warren and John Nix and others that really made a commitment to their neighborhoods.
And we, and we do appreciate that.
So I appreciate everyone that helps. So don't give me the credit.
I knew you wouldn't like it, that's why I said it anyway.
Yeah, I don't like that. But I want to give credit to the people that did the work.
Yes, sir. And given Ed and City Manager and I the latitude to do these projects through the leadership here in this team, and we thank you for that. But this is just a simple, there's a few more things that's wanted to be done. Vanessa Wade helped tremendously with the block grant organization of those funds. We wouldn't have been able to do this project.
That was brilliant how y'all did that, by the way. That was brilliant. Because I mean, I think almost every penny of this was paid.
Majority of it was, yes.
Pretty clubs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was brilliant how y'all did that. Congratulations on that.
So we leave it with you to approve that.
For, for, yes, I'd like for this to be the last, no, there's one more thing, but I'd like to approve something for $3,700.
Mayor, I want Mr. Russ to know that the alumni of Emmett J. Scott High School came into the city one weekend, and they spent a half a day at that park, and they wanted me to let you know how much they appreciate the work that the city and Mr. Russ has done.
It's awesome, isn't it?
They loved it.
Yeah, it's great.
A half-day there, taking pictures and just really enjoying it. So thank you so much for that. And I'd like to approve that motion.
Okay, that's a motion by McKeller.
Second.
Second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
For your commitment. Lisa? We're, we are pulling item M2 from the agenda. I know it's something that Councilman McGee has really worked on to move forward to today for a vote, but it's something that will be put off to another time because we have just another entity to work with to iron everything out.
Right.
So congratulations to staff and...
Developers are paying you?
To work on that. Good job.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me.
Give me some water. I mean, I'll get you some.
I'm fine, thank you. Item M3 is the request for the final payment and release of retainage to LS Equipment Company Incorporated for the 2020 Seal Coat Program. This contract was originally awarded in March of this year. The work has been completed. This represents 33 and a half lane miles of streets that have been seal-coated under this 2020 program. Like I said, the work is complete, it has been accepted. The work came in $133,451.66 under the original contract amount. So that's quite a substantial savings to that street fund. So the final contract amount was $797.608.39.
Great. And so any questions, Lisa? I entertain a motion.
Move to approve M3.
Motion by McGee, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve there any other items that we need to discuss some.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller, all in, not McKeller, McGee, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Yeah, I wrote down the names and I looked at the wrong part of the list. So at this time, we have the city manager's report.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I cut you short last time, but I won't. You've got plenty of time, just go ahead.
Oh, good. And because the vote...
Within reach.
Within reach. Well, ultimately, yeah, we're going to turn the city manager's report, Mayor and Council, into an opportunity to say thank you. This is the mayor's last meeting that he fully presups. He will be, you know, brought back for November 11.
Okay, I think this meeting's over?
We still have an executive session. Yeah, we still talk about, to you about buying some property. But it is an opportunity for us and members of the community to say thank you. And in fact, I'm hoping Pittman would kind of pop out. We do have a couple of, as far as items that we wanted to present to you, and then we also have a number of community members that wanted to say, just extend their gratitude to you for the work that you've done.
Okay, thank you. So, go ahead.
I really enjoyed the jacket, too. That was, I think, for 10 years of volunteering, I think I got this badge.
I love it. So thank you. I'll open that later. It's very kind. Thank you all very much.
And so, but yeah, I mean, it's ultimately, you've still got to sit there and be patient as you have for all these council meetings for the past six years. As other people come and talk to you, hopefully won't yell at you as they have sometimes during the past six years. But I think that there are a number of community members, or a few people that are here that wanted to say, express their impressive...
Mayor, Council, Don Warren, 1614 South College.
Yeah, we know where you live.
Mayor, I just want to say thank you for your service, for your leadership, for your mentorship. You know, I served on City Council with you for six years, and you were also instrumental in getting me on planning and zoning. And so I've learned a lot over the years. That's just been an honor to work with you. Now, the fun thing, or maybe not-so-fun thing, is over the course, over the course of six years, you know, we've, we've had a lot of discussions, and not all the discussions have been fun, but every discussion that wasn't fun, I walked away from it with a learning experience. So I do appreciate your mentorship with, with that. Now, going forward, I'm excited about you getting back to your, your private life and your family and your business, and I'm excited for your future, and just want to thank you for your past. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Don. I really appreciate it.
Mayor, Council, John Nix. I live on Jeff Davis somewhere.
We know where you live.
Yeah, I know, you know where I live. But yeah, I'm really thankful for this opportunity. And I just wanted to say that I served under Barbara with you as a fellow councilperson, and then under you as mayor for five-ish, some odd years on that as well. And I really, I do want to say thank you. You were a great battle buddy, and I would go shoulder to shoulder with you in almost anything. I appreciate your unwavering beliefs and your stances for things. And then also just kind of attest, you know, I got to be in a lot of situations with you over the years where you really fought for our citizens, and you fought off many usurious deals that people tried to present us with that were shiny and, and new and looked good on the surface, and you dug down and were able to identify things that would have, would have been a problem for our citizens long run, and would have been a problem for our citizens' employees, the city of Tyler employees. And so I think you, you know, I know you haven't made everybody happy over the years. We've all heard that in, in this position. But I do think that there was never a time where we were in a situation that I even had a question, that you didn't have the citizens' best interests and our best interests at heart, and that is high praise, and you did a great job, so.
Thank you very much, John. For, for you and Don, I will say that I couldn't have done this job without y'all. Y'all were just incredible support team on council, the current council we have. It's really, as you know, it's a lot more than just the mayor. It's all of us working together with the staff, and y'all both were incredible council members that went above and beyond the normal duties, and you really focused on the citizens as well. So while it's nice that you were giving me some praise today, I couldn't have done it without either one of y'all through the years because y'all were just incredible council members. So thank you all for your service, too. And by the way, that since we are in a period of COVID, John, we're not having any sort of roll-off for me until after COVID's over. You did not get the proper send-off either. So we're going to, we'll schedule that later to where we can have all the staff get together. We could all celebrate our years on council together then, okay? So thank you. Hello, Mr. Wayne.
Mayor, Council. Martin, I just wanted to come today and say thank you. Your service as a city councilman and then as mayor, you have done a wonderful job for the city of Tyler. I think you're going to go down in the annals of history as the longing service, longest-serving mayor.
It was not my intent.
And you have done a yeoman's job. I just wonder, though, Martin, you know, as long as we've known each other, did you get your background in service? I think one of the first elected slash appointed position was back in our fraternity days. Do you think that is what we were doing further?
I'm sure we're not going to talk about that at all.
But again, Martin, thank you for your service. Have fun, but don't go hide because we're going to need you.
Absolutely. So thank you very much, and thank you for putting yourself out for service, James, in this position in District Four. And that was a district that Don Warren held previously as well. So thank you very much for putting your name out to run. Yes, sir.
Mayor?
You sent me an email the other day, and I asked you...
I had a feeling you were going to say that.
...to respond, but you, you didn't really have to come up to the mic and respond.
We'll talk afterward. What can I say? I could say many things. I could stand here all day. I'm not. I just want to say thank you for your service to our, our city, our citizens. And I want to personally thank you just for myself and my family, the influence that you've had on us, and the integrity that you've had in this position. And I just, I really appreciate everything you've done. It's really refreshing and blessing when you have a leader that cares about the staff and the employees and the citizens. And, you know, just a prime example, a few years ago, my son was in the hospital. He had to be transported to Dallas, and the mayor called me on multiple occasions. I knew that he was concerned about what was going on with my family, and I will forever be grateful for that. And anything you need, I'm there for you, and I appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I will tell you that you, I'll just take this time to, to thank you and to staff, right? I mean, I, I think at this point, we, we actually have the best city staff that we've ever had. The competency level in all the different departments, from the leaders on down, we just have an incredible staff. And Kedrick, your, your work as CFO is, is amazing. The way that we are so transparent to our citizens about the data and what we do, couldn't happen without a CFO like you. So thank you for that. You've just been exemplary, but so has the rest of the staff. I mean, it's, it's just an amazing group of people. Thank you. Okay, Miss Ma'am.
Getting down to the lower levels. It's been a privilege to work with you these last several years, and I wanted to recognize five qualities that I think you have consistently demonstrated to me.
And I'm afraid, I'm afraid you would know, because for the ones that are listening that don't know, Jennifer is the person that does all my scheduling and does all the contacts...
And all your proclamations.
With me, with proclamations, and, and all the stuff that you send to the city generally goes through Jennifer, and she helps me stay organized, and I couldn't have done it without you over the years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, sir, you are meticulous. You have great attention to detail that has challenged us and pushed us to do better and to be better.
Okay, Watley, don't laugh at that.
You, yes. You are available. You have demonstrated your availability to staff, to citizens, and to the community time and time again with years of service. You are also responsible. You take your commitment and your oath seriously, and you have endured many challenges without neglecting your duty or overlooking any opportunity to make a positive investment in Tyler. You are tenacious. You have never given up in the face of adversity, and you have encouraged and sometimes pushed others to come to consensus in order to move forward. You are innovative. You've been willing to try new things, dream big dreams, and allow room for new methods of approaching an issue. And you are neighborly. You have consistently laid down your priorities. You are... You have consistently laid down your priorities, your objectives, and your life for the good of this community. You have demonstrated what it means to be a neighbor in the sense Christ spoke of taking care of your neighbor. So, now therefore, I, Jennifer Pittman, Secretary to the Mayor of Tyler, Texas...
I like that.
Do proclaim, Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N, as the official acronym of a Called to Serve Mayor, and because I cannot proclaim days, I present you this Called to Serve certificate.
Great, good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
That's great.
I heard your name being said.
Okay.
I don't have any prepared statements, but I couldn't pass up coming for your last meeting, so I'm glad I came after Jennifer because she echoed everything that I was gonna say. I mean, if there was any doubt, and I wanted to thank you, if there was any doubt of the citizens of Tyler how much you love this community, I think this last six months, you know, put all that to rest. For anybody that gets into this position for the right reasons, for a servant's heart, you've demonstrated that, and it was an honor to serve with you. It's been an honor to work with you, and I know that you, how many minutes left?
Let's look. Let's see.
He's got a timer, I think.
This is for the November 11th meeting, so let's, I don't want to get too specific or anything, but it's 13 days, 23 hours, 37 minutes, and 52 seconds. Not that I want to be specific.
You've been a model for others to follow, Martin, and I do appreciate what you've done, and your care and love for this community's been evident. I know you had one foot out and you were ready to go back in May, and you got delayed, and that was after all of the challenges that the city's been through, you know, up until that point, so I think now you have the record for service of mayor that won't ever be broken.
Or length of time, anyway.
Yes, that's what I meant, or length of time. There's no beating that record, so I like to tell people I had the longest city council record, but now you've got the longest record for serving mayor, and I appreciate, you know, everything that you've done for this community, and job well done. I'm glad you're getting to the end, and now we can get some real work done.
Yes. But, and Mark, you're similar to John and Don on the level of commitment that you've had. You've stayed on as the Hafset Sales Tax Chairman for me during all these years, and so that puts you at many, many years of service, because you did P&amp;Z, council, and Hafset Sales Tax Board. So, that could put you 15, 20 years or something?
I've been honored to be able to assist.
Yes, and you've done a great job, and that's what I would say for me as well. I'm just honored and privileged to be able to have served with everyone and serve this community. It's been phenomenal.
Well, good job.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, Mayor, I'm back. I'll be brief in honor of you. I know whenever I'm up here, that's what I'm always thinking, not embarrass myself and be brief. But in my short tenure here, I've had to honor the work with you on several occasions. A lot of people may not know that you're the Emergency Management Director, and I really appreciate the passion that you put into the ELC, the time you spent there, and how you really showed how much you cared for the citizens during that time. So, I know that's sort of pulling back the curtain. We don't let the public into the ELC, and so they didn't get to see that passion, but I did day in and day out, and I want to let you know that I really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate your service. With your leadership, you were able to really inform me so we could inform the public on what we could do and not do, and what efforts we should make, so your leadership has been great on that item as well as other items in the community, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't have to say anything.
Right?
You know, I can't let you leave without having something to say. So, first, I want to say that even before I came to council, the last six years, whatever I needed, I always reached out to you here at the city, and you always made that happen, whether it was resolutions or if there was anything that was going on in our community. So, on behalf of District Three, I want to say that you've made this last year of my coming on to council, the transition has been amazing. You've made it very easy along with the rest of the council, and I want to thank you. And then Dr. Orenthia Mason says you've been a wonderful mayor, and she wants you to know that.
That's great.
And so, thank you so much for all that you've done for me as making that transition to, onto City Council.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for all your efforts. You work really hard as a councilwoman, and I know you care so much.
We'll be calling you still.
Yes, ma'am. You can.
I'll continue echoing those sentiments that have been spoken already this morning, Mr. Mayor, but when I came on council three years ago, of the many challenges that we had, we were looking to find additional ways to fund city services and also address crippling infrastructure, and you put us on the path with your leadership to address both of those issues, and not just for the immediate, but for the long term also, too. And then along comes COVID, and very few people outside of ELC know the level of leadership that you exhibited in the ELC in procuring PPE for first responders and support for the medical facilities, and then the extraordinary effort to make sure that you kept our businesses open in Tyler, go unsaid, unmentioned, but now gratefully thanked, and it's been an honor to serve with you these three years.
Well, you know, you served on the ELC as well with us as an advisory member, and you did a great job, and none of these things would not be possible again if it wasn't for you and the other councilmembers jumping in on the infrastructure, because no one person does it on their own, so thank you all very much for...
You want to run it?
I can. Well, I mean, I really don't know what to say that already hadn't been said, but, you know, I just want to let you know that I appreciate your service, and I appreciate your leadership and also your friendship. Thank you for your honesty. You know, there have been times we've had some very candid conversations, and I think it has made me a better councilman, and I want to say thank you, and I appreciate that, and we will definitely not let you just ride off into the sunset.
I'm not going to.
No, I know it, exactly. So, again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, when I came on the podium this morning, Jennifer informed me that she had put Kleenex up here, knowing the emotional person that I am, but I want you to know that I wrote you a poem.
Oh, really?
And so, I won't be emotional.
Okay, good.
Can I read you the poem?
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes our mayor, sometimes our friend, best wishes to you we do extend. Your time to retire has finally arrived. Chronic complaining you have survived. Working with you was sometimes a pleasure. There are a few memories we hope we can treasure. There were times what you did we regret, but alas, we survived with a fret. Michelle, we hope you're ready. He's now quite yours, quite steady. We hope you survive better than we, but please don't send him back. We've had enough. No more gabbles for us. It's been really tough. Sincerely, sincerely, Mayor, we've been here for five and a half years together. My notions did get out of hand on occasion, but you always were right, and you taught me that if we just be patient and kind, we can get through it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you. I've enjoyed the five and a half years.
Me, too. Thank you. You know, I think it, I mean, I don't think it'd be any surprise to the public that when there's different issues around the city, that we are trying our very best and we're dedicated to making sure all the citizens are heard and all the citizens are respected. And then it will not have been uncommon for us to have some disagreements, sometimes in public, sometimes in committee meetings, but one thing that I can say is after we walked out of the meetings or finished a council meeting, we always came up with a very good compromise plan that was of the best service to our citizens. And so, part of that is public discourse and meetings from elected officials that are passionate. People don't get elected to serve in public, even though we're all volunteers, we don't make any money, so we're not here for the money. We are here because we care so much about our districts and about our city overall. So, yeah, there's gonna be times where we make a stand, and this is what I believe. Well, that's what you want in city government, that's what you want in government. You don't want people that want money or prestige. You want people that come up here and work for you and believe in something. And that we have, we all have, and the councilmembers that have spoken before all have strong beliefs, and I can assure the public that are very talented public staff, they have opinions, too, and they are looking out for the best interests of the citizens. And so, we've got such good leaders in every position that they're strong, but they're standing up for their point of view as well. So, I'll just say that by the way that government works and how local government works, I'm not gonna say Austin or Washington work worth a damn, but I'll say this process works because we're citizens having good discourse, and so I'm just proud of each and every one of y'all, and it's been my honor to serve with you and previous councils. It's really just been an honor and privilege, and now I'm really looking forward to getting back to my business and my daughter and my wife, and really spending some quality time that I've missed with them. So, thank you all very much. I know, just, I'm emotional about them.
It's bittersweet, Mr. Mayor, and along with that gift, we have a big hug for you.
Great, after COVID, we'll do it.
I'm surprised we could have a...
I am not a hugger, never have been, but, you know, after COVID, who knows, right?
Now, personally, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna miss being called dude.
Dude, dude. Well, I'll call you once in a while.
Okay.
Okay, is that all? No, we have, we have executive, no?
What?
We have executive session.
We have an executive session? Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll do that.
Oh, he's gonna get to use the gabbon one more time.
Yes, I'm gonna, in honor of my daughter, I'm gonna slap it really hard. I'm gonna smack it.
You always do.
Now, the executive session, the city council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of the Government Code. Deborah, you told me not to read fast, but it's my last one, so you don't, I don't really have a choice. Executive item number one under Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, Real Estate Liberation regarding the following discussion, discuss the purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real properties, the public discussion of which would have detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the city. And as always, I will ask the city manager and the city attorney, do we plan on having any action?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we do plan. Okay, so just for the media partners, you might want to hang out. I'm not even, I don't know what item is gonna be discussed, but you might want to hang out just in case we do have action. So, at this time, we are in recess for executive session.
That was nice. Now, I'm sure you do know the title.
My phone doesn't work in your phone.
He set that wrong.
I'm not even, I don't know what item is gonna be discussed, but you might wanna hang out just in case we do have action. So, at this time, we are in recess for executive session.
Now, I'm calling you dude all the time.
My phone doesn't work in your phone.
He set that one up.
I'm trying to sell a lot over there, I need to say.
Hello Ginny. Thank you for not saying anything earlier. Yes, that's it, I'll take it. Who's running the deal back there? Who? Oh Bob's back there, good. How about, okay. Are you ready?
Yeah, he gave us the line.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we're returning from executive session. It was an item relating to real estate deliberations and at this time, we do have the fire chief to line out what we just, he just informed us to the public.
Yes, sir. Good morning again, Mayor and Council. We, we were lined out the, the moving of our fire admin building to, to another location along Front Street. We had made an offer and we were looking for the council to approve that offer. We think it's a fair offer and we feel like that that building can accomplish the needs of the fire department for the next few decades.
Oh, good. Few decades.
Yes, sir.
That's a nice term.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you want to have?
Yeah.
City Manager.
As far as, on this, the acquisition for our funding strategy is with coronavirus relief funds that have been released to us from the state, by the state, that have come from the federal CARES Act. We will be using our reimbursement, a portion of that for the acquisition and then come back to council relatively soon to discuss as far as also utilization of that money for the renovation of the facility. One of the things that Chief Kobel and his staff, as they look towards the designs to make sure the facility is designed in a way, not only that takes care of fire administration needs, but also how it can be able to assist with testing, vaccine distribution, and other things related to both the COVID-19 processes and other health processes that we may have in the future.
Great. So, um, you want, you want to describe the building, the address or anything?
Yes, sir. The address is 1520 West Front Street. I believe the building was originally built to be the workforce center for the state of Texas. It is a hardened building. It's around 8,000 square feet. It has had some renovations around 10 years ago when it was owned by the previous owner, which some of those office space, so about 70% of the office space is already built out. It would just need painting and floors. And, and then the other part will be new space that we will be adding to an open area in the middle of the building.
Okay.
Great.
Great. I'll then entertain a motion to purchase the building.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the purchase of property of zero point, I'm sorry, .0923 acres of land located at Lot 57-B, Block 666-C of Tyler, Smith County, Texas for the amount of $550,000 from Tyler Regional Hospital LLC.
Second.
I, I have a motion by McGee, a second by McKeller. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And this is a project that has been discussed for, gosh, 15, 20 years, I think, for our new fire admin. This absolutely is the best, most cost-effective project, proposal that we've ever had. So this is a good proposal and then with the timing of the CARES Act, it's, or whatever that, whatever. You all got another acronym for it. I don't know, acronym for everything.
It's an acronym for the state, so you're actually correct on CARES Act.
Okay, that's close enough. So, but I mean, I, I applaud you all for, for being very sensitive to the taxpayers as well and coming up with the, the really the least expensive project that we've, we've looked at over the years. So congratulations on it as well.
Mayor, it also allows the city to take a lead role in revitalizing that portion, a piece of property in that portion of Tyler and West Front Streets.
It's a great location, great location too.
Yes. So that is all the business that we have today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. We are adjourned.
You sure did hit that dabble hard.